Hey, Michael.
Here I am.
Hey, Bob.
I got everybody upstairs, so I hope I can get through. Are we still on track for a quorum?
Uh, should be. We had five people say they could make it, so, um.
We need everybody.
Yeah, Raphael was a question mark. She didn't respond, and then Marissa said she couldn't make it, so.
Yeah.
I think we should be good.
Yeah. I haven't had a chance to even turn on my computer, so this is it, but I did get on Wi-Fi, so at least I'm not burning up my minutes.
What's going on, guys?
Logan.
Not much. How's the new baby?
Um, very tiny and asleep right now, so. All's well.
How's the new Papa? Is he holding up?
By a couple strings, but holding up.
I remember those days.
Only good things to say. Sorry, I missed you last week. Good to see you, Tim.
Hey, how are you? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Logan.
Thank, thanks, Michael. Appreciate it. We're doing just fine. The dogs are the ones making the biggest adjustment, to be honest. Let me get some stuff up here.
Uh, Shelly, I think Rachel's in the waiting room, if you haven't already promoted her.
Yeah, I'm trying to, and it's trying to get her over there.
There she goes.
I was, I didn't realize I needed to like be a panelist.
You're special, Rachel.
Uh, I'm gonna be pulling up the, uh, the bylaws anyways, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Uh, do you want to, Willie, would you, would it be easier if I shared screen or?
Um, whichever one works better for you, Tim.
Um, I'm okay doing it just so I can take, uh, the comments of the commission members and add them in real time, if that's.
That work for me?
And I know, thank you, Michael, for your, uh, your comments, so you can.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, maybe when the group's ready to start, that's where we can start. But I'll let you decide when you're ready to start.
I think we have everybody, um, that said they were coming, so, um, I think we're good whenever, whenever you want to get started, Bob.
I think we need Kara, don't we?
Oh, you're right, we do. I'm bad at math.
We need one more.
I did not count correctly.
Yeah, I was counting Joe.
Sorry, I don't count.
Yeah. Not when, not when we need it, anyway.
Good to see you all.
You as well.
Yeah, we thought we were gonna we thought we were gonna sneak one by you without you being there, but then it all fell apart on us, Joe.
Return email real quick.
My phone is doing some weird things to me here. Keeps muting on me. Now Kara said she could make it, right?
Mm-hmm.
She did.
Yep.
Have her number, I can give her a text.
Uh, I don't have it with me. Yeah, um, I sent her an email just now, but I don't think I have her number. Do you, Shelly?
I don't have it with me, no. The folder's at work.
Yeah.
I don't think I got it, but I can look.
It'll be mighty unfortunate if we have to cancel our makeup meeting for our meeting.
Yeah, I've got this email.
I sent her an email as well, so hopefully she gets.
Hopefully, your, oh, her email is pinging like crazy.
Yeah.
Let me see if it's in any of her signatures. She always emails from her iPhone.
That's a good idea.
I got it. I'll give her a call. Okay, um, she is on her way. Apparently she had to work late, so she is, um, trying to join. I'm sending her the phone link now so she can get in.
Right.
She is.
There.
There she is.
So sorry.
Okay.
I'm biking home, sorry.
Yeah, well, I'm in Utah, so there.
I think it'll take you about longer to get home. Yeah.
We do have a quorum, Will. I'm gonna go ahead and make you host.
Okay.
Okay.
Ready, Bob?
Yes, let's, uh, let's do a roll call to prove that we actually do have a quorum. Bob Stevenson, chairman, is here.
Mike Chisholm, uh, vice chair here.
Rachel Tallya here. Kara Franchi Piani present.
Logan Dunning here.
Uh, Will Charles here.
Joe Anderson, councilor is on present.
And then Tim here is here as well. There we go.
And we have best guess, Tim Anderson, or Tim Dunn, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, very quickly, let us make sure that we have approved the minutes from last meeting. I looked at them, I had no questions or problems. As long as anybody else does, I will entertain a motion to approve them.
So move.
I need a second.
Second.
Anybody?
Logan seconded. I think Kara did as well.
Me or Rachel, whoever, second.
I think we might have lost Bob now. He looks very frozen.
Yeah, he does.
I hope I just dropped out. Did I get a second?
Uh, Logan second.
Yes.
Promotion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? We will say that it is approved. The minutes are approved. We have Tim Dunn here to go over, uh, the changeover to sustainability from Keep Inglewood Beautiful, and I will turn it over to you at this point, Tim.
Fair, thanks, Bob, and I know, um, I appreciate you all meeting on a special night. It's not normally your meeting night, and know a lot of us have things going on, so we'll definitely try to keep, keep this as short and sweet as possible. Um, I just kind of wanted to start by kind of laying out the process, um, and then we can launch into the document, so, um, the plan is to still go before council on August second, um, with basically a draft proposal. Because KEB is also in the, um, uh, it's in the municipal code for the city of Inglewood, there will also need to be an ordinance, um, just to cha- essentially change the, well, let me back up. If this group wants to proceed with a name change, um, we would also need to go through the ordinance route. Um, I'm working with the city attorney's office, um, again, if, if that is what this board decides to advise, um, we can, I'm gonna try to, to do it all on one item, um, going before council on August second. Um, because of, um, their workload and whatnot, um, we may need to move that part back to August sixteenth, so, in other words, um, if this group, so I guess that's where we'll start, is a name change. Um, if you do want to go forward with a name change, uh, we will need to also go the ordinance route. So before I jump into the rest, um, do, do you want to pursue a name change?
The chair will, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, change the name from Keep Inglewood Beautiful to Inglewood.
You muted yourself, Bob.
It keeps doing that, I'm sorry. To change from Keep Inglewood Beautiful to Inglewood Sustainable Commission. The chair will entertain a motion to do so. Do I have such a motion?
Just for clarification, Bob, was it Inglewood Sustainability Commission or Inglewood Sustainable Commission?
Sustainability.
Okay. I, I so moved to, uh, change the name.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second, it's Rachel.
Rachel seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor of changing the name to Inglewood Sustainability Commission, vote aye.
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 Aye. Do I have any nay votes? Then the motion is carried unanimously. And we're back to you, Tim.
Great, thank you. So I'll work with the city attorney's office and do what we need to do for that, so thank you for that guidance. Um, so the next one, creation, all I did here was just add this last sentence, basically for historic purposes, so just note that, um, you know, to keep that it was this, um, and that it was changed, and we'll probably change this to August, but is that, again, this is just for historic purposes, if someone's looking at this twenty years from now. Okay, um, so then we launch into the duties, um, and thanks again, Michael, for your comments. Um, would it make more sense, um, to, for me to kind of go through what I have here, um, or should we start with Michael's comments?
Now, is your comment the in purple, and then Michael has other comments?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. I would say let's do your, uh, changes, and if we have any discussion, we can go with that, and Michael, if, as we go through, will you just follow up on your comments, please?
Sure.
Great.
Great. So the first change is minor, but I bulleted it out. I just thought that made more sense to show what each specific duty is. Um, so the showing, so the duties of the commission should be to promote public interest and the general improvement of the environment of the city of Inglewood, so that's already, this is the way it's written right now. Um, so then the first duty is the initiation, planning, direction, and coordination um, of protection of the environment in conjunction with and consideration with the citizens, government, businesses, et cetera, so, um, this one is really kind of speaks to some of the programming that you already do. It really just means that you, part of your role is to initiate, plan, and direct, um, basically environmental protection activities.
Uh, Tim, can I jump in? That reads, uh, fine. All I wanted, all I was trying to do was clarify that we don't have operational wherewithal to make things happen, and I just didn't want any confusion, because as I read it the first time, to me, it, it intimated that we had more capability than we have, and I didn't want that to be confusing. In other words, I see us as making recommendations and supporting the efforts of the city, um, and, and in any way that we can, but we don't have a planning department, we don't have a budget, we don't have the ability to operationalize things, so that, that's all I was getting at. You know, I don't know how others feel about it, but I just, I didn't want it to appear that we were in charge of things that we weren't really in charge of.
How does this work, then making recommendations to city staff on, uh, and then kept the rest?
Yeah, I think that would work.
Okay. The next duty is new, um, so this is encouraging sustainable actions throughout the city, including encouraging community members and businesses to adopt practices and strategies to improve the environment.
I would like to add, including the city, um, the city itself, city, I don't know if we'd say city staff, but, uh, I'd also like to think that we could encourage the city employees, uh, to review their all, their actions and programs as well. Does that make sense, Tim?
Yeah, so I added to this list, including encouraging city government, community members, and businesses.
Great.
That work? Okay.
Perfect. And if anybody else has comments, please jump in. Okay, great.
All right, the next one, I took this out, um, so this maybe, I don't know if this is something you wanted to keep in, but implement and maintain the Keep America Beautiful system.
No, I think that was one of the things that we had sent through to have removed.
Yep. Okay. The next one, uh, study, investigate, and develop plans to improve the health, sanitation, safety, and cleanliness of Inglewood by beautifying streets, highways, alleys, et cetera, um, on both public and private property in the city, aid in the removal and elimination of trash and other debris is, um, and so I took this out just because I, I thought it maybe connected more to kind of the old structure, um.
Does anybody have any problems or comments? I think that's fine.
Yeah, I deferred to Bob.
Go ahead. Who had that comment? I'm, I'm not seeing, I, I'm.
No, it was Rachel. I just said, I, I agree. Sounds good.
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
The next one is, um, you know, kept it the same, so advise and recommend plans to departments of the city for the beautification of Inglewood and to promote public interest in the general improvement of the environment, um. So I don't know if this is duplicative, or it's kind of more to me like of a summation of kind of some other things, but.
Um, just a thought, I like the spirit of the bullet point, but again, I think what we've learned in the past is when we get into communications and responsibilities, it gets real confusing to me. So for example, we can advise and recommend, but then I think we need to turn it over to the city or the staff to get it in the various communication channels, which most of the time has worked, but, um, I, I just think it ought to be clear, we don't, we don't have our own communication channels. We rely on the city's communication channels, and I think, you know, we should appeal to the city for help, and, and like I said, it's been good, but we ourselves don't really do it. We, we rely on other programs and services within the city.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a great point. And we have to make that clear, I think, with every bullet point. That we are, the whole point of the commission is ad- advice and recommendation. Okay? Anybody else?
Okay, so keep this one the same.
Yeah.
And then this one, I think we're kind of going into this one to provide a space for public engagement where input can be given and feedback heard and considered.
I think that, that is exactly what we should be doing.
I agree.
Okay. Seek relationships and partners within, within the community on common sustainability efforts. So this is really intended to, you know, there's a lot of nonprofits in the city, um, things like the DDA, um, the case group, it's really meant to be that you could be the conduit for helping to build some of those relationships related to sustainability.
Tim, would it make sense to also add to this other entities within just other entities, like if we perhaps see a program in another community or another organization that we would like to bring, uh, could we utilize that under this, or should we break that out? Does my question make sense?
Yeah, so I think, Bob, if I'm hearing you right, I think it's two, two different things that we could add. The first one is, within this bullet, we could add something like including with other entities. So seeks relationships and partnerships, including with other entities within the community. But then we could have another bullet, if, if that works for you, that basically is something like monitors and collects along with staff, best practices on municipal sustainability programs.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Does that work? Yeah, if legal leads or something has anything else, uh, or, you know, but that, that covers the ground that I think we should cover. Great, thank you.
No problem. Um, provide input to staff on the development of the annual city of Inglewood sustainability plan, including the inclusion of projects and setting of performance targets.
Great. That's a lot of responsibility right there. I think that's great, myself.
And I think as we discussed, that's something you can ease into, you know. Um, yeah. Um, the next one, on an annual basis, provide counsel with an update on programs and initiatives included in the plan.
Yeah.
So this one's more of like the development, and this one's the reporting, essentially.
Reporting, yep.
And then provide recommendations to council relative to sustainability programs and initiatives.
Great.
Um, can I chime in? I, those are all good. Um, I made a point of, uh, making written comments or recommendations, and I'm, and I'm comfortable with bullet points and white space. We don't need to write thesis papers, but things get lost in the ether everywhere, so even if we have a meeting, and let's say we listen to somebody from Even if we have a meeting and let's say we listen to somebody from Littleton who is involved in a great program in Littleton. And we say, this is great. We hope Inglewood would seriously consider doing a similar program. It sounds trite, but it's not. We need to put that in writing.
Yep.
It's just a note or a minutes or something that. That city staff and the council knows what we think. And if we say. This is a great idea. We hope staff and council considers it. It's on the record. And that was our opinion so that. It would challenge us as a group to come up with a consensus. And let's just say. We were split and half of us thought it was a great idea and half of us didn't. Well, then we don't send something in writing and we can't come to an agreement. When we put it in writing, we legitimate legitimate the idea or the concept. That's about all we can do. We can say, we think this is great. And if we just talk about it. It it can evaporate. It can go away. And six months later, somebody says, whatever happened to that idea that we heard about in Littleton? And if staff or the council says ain't ever gonna happen, it's not gonna work, that's fine. I don't have any problem with that, but it was officially communicated and it it challenges us as a group. To think about this stuff and it and to arrive at a consensus. And if we can't, then it's not really such a great idea.
Well, I I totally agree and putting written in there kind of covers that. And uh, even. I mean. Yeah, and even. I would take it one step further. If we came on some point that we could not come to an agreement. I think that we could even make that clear, but provide that input. And with our disagreement. Now, that's something that we can cross that bridge when we come to it, but. I think your point of having written and and getting it in front of council is is. Very apt and it, you know, needs is a great recommendation, so. Uh, and it it seems to me that you've already incorporated that, Tim.
Thank you.
Yeah, I added written before recommendations and then I added documented by staff. So.
I don't, I don't really foresee that we would not be able to reach a consensus, but if that happened. We could, we could deal with that and still bring an idea before them, you know, but anyway. Okay.
Well, that's it for the big section. Um, is there anything, Michael, from your comments that we didn't address or?
No, this is great, Tim. I appreciate it. Uh. A point of clarification, uh, you took out the stuff about Keep America Beautiful. That does not preclude us from still working with them if we so desire, you know what I'm saying? Because there are grant possibilities through them. I mean, what's the feeling? Are are we gonna divorce ourselves from them or are we just gonna work with them as we see fit?
Yeah, I think, I think we can maybe do some of the the work, uh. But. I. I don't. I don't know if they want to work with us if we're not having that name. I don't know.
Okay.
Go ahead.
But I'm agnostic on it. I I mean, I don't. Yeah, like I said, I I it's just clarification. I don't, I don't know. I mean, what is it? Will we pay? A couple hundred bucks a year to be affiliated with them or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a pretty insignificant amount of money that goes to it. You know, this is y'all's choice. Um, my thought would be that might. That might be kind of a muddy, muddying the water of what the goal is if you kind of keep that. But, uh, you know, that's, that's up to you guys. That's a good point. I I hear you.
What do what do we get?
Do we want to divorce ourselves completely or, I mean. My feeling is, but I'm more to loosey goosey, is that if. Keep America Beautiful came to us and said, look, we, we want you to do this or this. And we could fit it in. And do it, but otherwise, you know, I mean, at one point. When I was starting this, we found out that we had not really been keeping. Up with some of the requirements of Keep America Beautiful anyway, so. I would, I'm, I would have no problem either way, but uh. Let's, let's just call it, let's just say right now that uh. We're gonna break it. I don't, I don't know. I'll entertain a motion, one way or the other.
What does our couple hundred dollars a year gain us? What do we get from being a member?
Well, this last year we gained ten thousand dollars, but that's about the first thing we've ever gained. That I can see.
And how long have we been a member?
Well, since uh, I think since, what was that date, Tim, on that? I can't.
Yeah, nineteen ninety is the formal date, I think.
Yeah.
The opportunity to apply for grants is pretty nice, but I wonder. I wonder if it's worth it. You know, can we, can we apply for those every year or is that once every ten, fifteen years? I don't know.
Yeah. My feeling on that, based on my experience, is that that could almost be a one off, but. Uh, I. The more I think about it, I, I'm willing to entertain a motion that we just break it off completely. And and if they come to us with some cleanup or some, some recommendation or something. We could examine it then, but I don't, I don't think we're. At, we, we necessarily need to maintain any contact there. I hate to be that blunt about it, but. You know, especially after getting the grant, but. We're gonna have a lot on our plates.
I agree.
All right, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that, um, as we have done, we've stricken. All mention of Keep America Beautiful from our new bylaws. And we, I think we should discontinue our, our dues paying relationship with them. Uh, unless an opportunity presents itself, we would reconsider.
Do I have a second?
This is Cara. I'll second that.
I have a second from Cara. Do I? Do I have any discussion, any more discussion? All in favor of removing any mention of Keep America, any. Relationship with Keep America Beautiful, say aye.
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 Any else voting?
Aye.
Hey. Mike, did you vote?
Yeah, aye, I'm in favor.
Do I have any nays? Then I will say the motion is carried unanimously. We will sever our relationship with Keep America Beautiful. Back to you, Tim.
Hey, well, that's it then for duties. The only other, so most of this is pretty stoked, and I think we went over this before. Uh, one of the last times, but most of this language is just standard. That's in most, um, bylaws for other boards and commissions. So the only other, uh, change that was proposed by by Mike. Um, was under committees and limiting the number from six to four. And I think, Mike, this is probably because. Of a quorum issue, right?
Right, I'm just, if there's nine members, five would be a majority, so. So I don't know. I mean, I just thought that was an oversight on the numbers.
Yeah.
Because I can see you don't want a quorum on a committee.
So what would your number be? Seven?
No, four. In other words, if if we have nine members on the Sustainability Commission. A subcommittee using this logic could have a max.
I see what you're saying. Okay, yes. I agree. Yes. Any other comments on that?
So do we need to read, are we gonna read, do we need to reach out to them to to sever that or disassociate or is it just effective and?
I, I think it'll just be effective, uh, Will. And Mike, uh, maybe you could check on that or check on city policy or whatever. There is on that, but I think that would just become effective.
Yeah, I would think once our term runs out or.
Yeah. Our current membership runs out, we just won't renew it.
And how long are we members for?
They're a year at a time. I don't know exactly where we're at. I would imagine we're. Pretty close to that, though. Uh, because I think we, because we got that grant right before. HHW last year and we're coming up on that now, so I'd imagine we're within a month or two of it now.
I, I believe you're right, and you might make a note of yourself to double check that and and make sure. Because I don't think it was for a calendar year. But I may be wrong.
Okay. Yeah.
Is it? Would we, I would almost like to change the, the. Makeup of the whole Sustainability Committee down to seven. Because that seems to be about where we tend to maintain ourselves. Uh, would that require council to approve that, Tim?
It would, yes, but it could be in the same ordinance as the name change. So yes, it would require council action, but it. We could do it all at the same time.
What, what's the feeling of the committee? I, I think. Yeah.
If you limit it to seven, does that, I guess, limit? The ability to add future members and build the group more than seven if we want to? I mean, I guess we don't know, you know, how much is gonna. Come our way and how busy we might get with some of these future assignments and recommendations and whatnot, so. Um, I know, like, we've been trending around seven, but with the changing of. You know, of the entire committee, I guess we don't really know what that will look like and if it makes sense to have more members.
That, that's an excellent point. I'm willing to, uh, leave it at nine. And maybe review it after a year. Or or something, or would that? Take a lot to do, Tim, or Joe, or Will, or anybody who might know.
I, I would just, uh, I mean, my, my inclination is to leave it at nine just because I don't think we're gonna have any problem. Finding people who want to apply for this commission after the name change and name change and and mission change of the group. I think it's gonna be. Um, a highly desirable commission to be on. And I think we, there will be more, more work to do in the end. And having more community input will be valuable, but.
Yep.
That'd be my opinion as as well. And also just, you know, the other thing too is if you have. You know, right now we have, we have seven on the board. And so whenever one or two people can't make it, that makes it difficult to do things. Um, so if you haven't, you know, if you, if you get that nine, um, you know, one or two people can't make a meeting, it doesn't. It doesn't put us on that make or break line.
Yeah. Well, uh, let's, let's not. Deal with that right now. And then if if we do not fill up or if we. If there's something that we need, if we're not making forums or whatever, we can deal with that, but yeah. Yeah, the more I think about it, the more I think we're gonna have a lot going on. And we should be able to generate more interest, so I think we'll just leave it at nine. And see what happens at that point. Because I think you're right, Joe. Okay. Tim, does that cover everything we need for council for the thing then?
Yes, that covers, covers everything I need. Um, so I will, uh, follow up with Will tomorrow. When I hear from the city attorney's office about whether. We can do the ordinance on August second as well, or whether we need to move that to the sixteenth, but that. Um, you know, obviously if there's council buy-in with everything you want to change in the bylaws and the name, then. Um, that should be a relatively quick process after that.
Okay, so what, what I'm hearing you saying. Is that we've got the ball rolling, we can keep it rolling, and we should know something by the end of August at the latest, right?
Yes, I would say that.
Okay.
Tim and Bob, real quick, do you, uh? Do you want them to vote on these changes just so it's? Formally done or, um?
Yeah.
Wait till after August?
Yeah.
No, I, I would, I would rather have them vote. And maybe even by our August meeting, we have it nailed down. That would be fine with me. Is there any other questions or comments on that? I think the sooner the better. Okay. And that's what we'll go with, I take it. Is that your, is that fine with you, Tim?
That's perfect, yep.
Okay, well, I think our work on that is done then. Unless anybody has anything else to say, we will. Let you go about your business and maybe we'll hear back by our August meeting then.
Real quick, do you wanna, do you wanna do a motion to approve the bylaws, the changes to the bylaws?
Oh, yeah, I guess we better do that too, huh? Yeah, I, I'll entertain a motion that we, as a commission, approve. The. Changes to the bylaws as some, as written. And by Tim at this meeting. Do I have such a motion?
I second.
Who was that? Rachel?
Rachel, yep.
Yep. Any, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? We will record the motion as carried unanimously. Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Also shout out to Bob for learning how to use backgrounds.
It's only on my phone. Everything else does not work that well. Okay, we just need a couple of quick action items and we'll be out of here. The uh. Electronic and hazardous waste is coming up in September. I just want to keep that before you. I don't think we need much more, except that it'll be. What were those dates? The week after Labor Day?
Uh, eighteenth and twenty-fifth of September.
Eighteenth and twenty-fifth of September.
Yep.
So. We're all aware of that. We will need to cover that and, uh. Will, do we want to get some other volunteers? What kind of participation are we gonna need this? Do you have?
Yeah, I mean, so they'll be, so I'll be there for both days as well as one rep. Yeah, I mean, so they'll be, so I'll be there for both days as well as one representative from Littleton. Usually it's good if we have about four to five people there. So usually we do about two shifts a day, so like an eight to, eight to 11 and then 11 to two kind of shift. So if we can, if we can kind of divvy those up between people, it'd be great. And then, you know, kind of seek outside volunteers if we have any sort of gaps.
Yeah, I would like to, to recommend that we try for some outside volunteers.
Okay.
And, and then we will, we will try and nail this down at our August meeting so that we're, we're not at the last minute in September scrambling. But we have a couple of months. But yeah, I would like for us to, to see if we can get some community participation in this, okay?
Okay.
Any other comments?
I had something I wanted to bring up with the group, if now is a good time to do that.
Sure.
Um, so I'm very close with a friend who is on code enforcement committee and also the Parks and Rec committee. And she's been working on a program, I think mainly through Parks and Rec. But for a proposal that the city offered grants to help citizens clean up their blocks. For example, like a neighborhood could rent a dumpster and help each other clean up an alleyway of branches and weeds. And they could nominate a block captain who could apply for side grant and kind of go through that process. So I know this is something that's being talked about, you know, through other committees. And she had asked that I bring it up here in the event we wanted any involvement or to, you know, help promote that or, I don't know, bring a recommendation to council that that, you know, happen. So, you know, any thoughts?
I'll, I'll make my thoughts clear. I am all for it. I think that would even fit under our sustainability model. And I would like to maybe explore it and, and let's put that on the agenda for our August meeting. Will you make a note of that, Will?
Yep, can do.
Yep, I'll get more information from her and sort of where they are in the process through some of the other committees that she's on and see, you know, what we could do from our end to kind of help and push that along, so.
Yep. Let, let's make that a point to have that on the August agenda. And maybe we can have a tidal wave of commissions supporting it or something. Unless anybody has any problems, I think it's a great idea. Okay, we'll leave it at that. We'll have it on our August agenda. And if you can bring some stuff, that would be great. And maybe you and I, Will, can look at that a little closer and see what we might come up with too, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, I have one other item on the agenda and that is Parks is finishing up the work at Romans. And they have a need to put some coating, paint, something on the mushrooms, you know, that's known as mushroom parks. Because at one time, there were little, there, the mushrooms are still there, but at one time they were like little picnic areas. And they're going to, to coat them so that they last. And if we could use our funds to do that, that would free up some, some of their monies and help them out. And I think we could get, keep America beautiful and maybe even keep Englewood beautiful. Some recognition for supporting that and then be a win-win for everybody else. I'm understanding that the, the, my, the need would be between $5,000 and $7,000. It may be on the lower end of that, but I, I thought we should go for seven and, and cover, cover it all if there were any extinguished, any other, you know, things. They would have a little leeway on that. I'm open to any discussion or ideas on that. And, and what, what do you guys think? What do you people think?
I'll start. I, I think it's a great idea. I think Parks has just done a great job. That pollinator garden, they came to the rescue. They came up with funds and they got it going. So we sort of owe them something. And so my feeling is this may be an example of what we'd be doing in the future where we would be recommending to the city, we think this is a good idea. And hopefully the city would bear that in mind. So I don't know how formal the process is, but I think it's a great idea.
Anybody else? I will entertain a motion then that we allocate up to $7,000 to help Parks coat those mushrooms at Romans Park to finish that project. And, and mention, what's the word I'm trying to think of? That we acknowledge keep America beautiful and keep Englewood beautiful in some way. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Great.
I'll second it.
Mike, is that you?
I'll second it.
Great. Any other discussion?
This sounds funny that we're dealing with mushrooms at Parks and Recreation. I'm okay with it.
I'm not touching that with a 10-foot pole. I hadn't even thought of that.
What's Englewood up to these days?
Yeah. I'll ask that. All in favor, say aye.
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 I hear no negatives. Any, anybody say nay? I will say the motion is carried unanimously. And I really do appreciate everybody getting this done, getting this together so we can keep this moving. Thanks, Mike, for keeping us on track. And with that, I, I see we've already discussed the motion on our, looking at the cleanup, neighborhood cleanups and stuff. So unless anybody has anything else, I'm in favor of call for a motion to adjourn. Besides, I got a family waiting on me right now. Do I hear a motion? Please.
I motion.
Second. I got a family waiting too.
All in favor, say goodbye.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you much. Great meeting.
Good to see y'all. Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Congratulations, big guy. Bye-bye.
Thanks, bye. See y'all.
See ya.